All right. I would like to start off with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair, I would move that the minutes to the non-public sessions of this evening be sealed until such time as the majority of the board feels it is wise and prudent to unseal them.
I would second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, on to our scheduled business. First item, we're going to skip down and we are going to go to, if I can...
Item B.
Item B, central fire station, market analysis. And who is going to speak to this item?
Did you review the market analysis that was provided?
I did.
Okay, Carla is here from Coco Early Realtors. Do you have any questions for her?
I did notice that, obviously, trying to compare the old fire station to some other property is a little difficult. And I think I even recognized one or two of the properties that you compared it with. So even though this property had a very unique purpose, do you still see that the recommended market price would be accurate?
I'll just mention it for the record. Carla Bailey with Coco Early and Associates. Yeah, some of the properties had more acreage or more square footage, so what was in the analysis is on the high end, and on the estimated net sales price, it was a little lower than that high end. So again, weighing in for the square footages and the land lots, the lot size, it might be a little bit lower, but still within that range, I think, would be fine. I put most of the weight on the properties that were similar in the usages, you know, having the bays, the garage bays and whatnot, but again, trying to find, you know, was a unique property, so.
And how long have you been in the business of real estate and doing market analysis?
Yeah, 22 years. Yeah, I'm licensed in both Massachusetts and New Hampshire.
Couple of things that I can... First of all, in reviewing the market analysis, one of the things that I did notice is that most of the properties are on Route 125, not on Route 108. And in real estate, I was always told it was location, location, location. There's a big difference between those two locations. And I was wondering how that might have been taken into account in your analysis.
To an extent, we did, I did within a radius of the area, so similar towns, because actually, right now in Newton, there's one property, one commercial that's up for sale, and that's a storefront. So I didn't even include that one as much as I would have liked to have had something for Newton. There were other properties that were better comparables. And so, location helps, but you're still on a main road, you're not set back. I mean, obviously, it's not 125, and so again, you'll see that the prices are different for those areas, and it's reflected in the lower range for that purpose as well. There are some on Main Street in Kingston, there's one on Danville Road in Plastow, so again, they weren't right on 125. They have the, you know, proximity, whatnot. You know, like, Kingston, it's off 125. And not even, you don't even really have the access from 125 for where the other ones in Plastow on Danville Road you did, but...
Well, yeah, I was looking at proximity. Even the one in Plastow, which is also on Route 108...
Yes.
Is a lot easier to get to, because you have, you know, direct, there's basically one road from there...
Right.
Out to 125.
I think for, again, depending on the buyer and the type of service that goes into that area, you still have good accessibility to 125, 111, 495, 95, 110, you know, you're still in a central location versus being out some long winding road. I mean, you still have easy access, so, you know, it is different than, obviously, 125 with your traffic count. So I think, again, it would come into the type of business that wants to be there if they need to have, you know, if it was going to be a used car store or something like that, they might want more of the traffic. But I feel that the higher percentage of probability of the buyer is looking more at the size of the building and the usage that that allows with the doors and everything, that I think it'd be okay.
Now, does your analysis take into effect that the structure that is there now would not primarily, I mean, it's basically a sale of land.
Right.
The structure that's there now would have to disappear.
I did not take that into...
Why would it happen?
I was gonna say, is there something you know that I don't know about the condition of it?
It can be renovated. They could renovate. It doesn't necessarily have to come down.
I was gonna say, it seems structurally, I didn't do an inspection, but when I was walking around, so unless, if there's some knowledge that it's not, then I would redo the analysis. I did it based on...
There have been mold issues there, there have been other issues.
Jim. We can, you know, there are non-public discussions we can have about the property.
No, this is public stuff that we mentioned when we discussed why we needed a new fire system.
Right, but I mean, with this board, we could always choose to do that in another time, but...
To answer your question, the analysis was based on the building being used.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
I didn't do it as a land.
And my last question, and this is for the board, is that the sum that would be paid in actually any listing agreement far exceeds our bid policy. And we may have to, I mean, we're looking at roughly a $30,000 commission, listing commission.
And we had tasked Diane with reaching out to Realtors to tell us their interest, and this is the Realtor that came to us with their interest.
That's what we need to make sure that that's known by, known to people.
I reached out to several, and Coco Early, Carla is the only one that has come back to us.
Okay, that's...
You've done due diligence.
If it helps, we did lower it because you're a municipality.
Oh, thank you. Just, you know, not to belabor this any longer, but what are some ideas you would, you might have to sell this piece of property, being that it's a little different than selling, you know?
I actually, I've had a lot of different ideas of who could be interested, from emergency, you know, other emergency service companies, to recreational businesses that could use that open floor space downstairs and still have the office areas upstairs. Some automobile, not sales, but I know of some other businesses that have vehicles that they need to store, and so having the five, six bays, I think, would be intriguing to them, or, you know, create value to them as well. And that's why we're not talking about as well the location, for the people just off the top of my head that may have interest in it. I don't think, you know, needing to be on 125 or 110 or any of those would play a big factor.
Yeah, 'cause my thing would be, I don't think this would be the type of property you could list on just LMS and put in the paper and then be done with it. It sounds like you really have to go out and, you know, target and reach, yeah.
Yep, definitely, again, the businesses that might have interest in that type of building and that type of size with the parking, with that locale.
So you have channels in which to reach out to those folks?
Yep, and again, both being licensed in Mass and New Hampshire allows me to do the business in both states. And, you know, we have the commercial Board of Realtors that we can involve it in as well.
By the way, Jim, one of the previous listings that she used to, as comparison, has the perfect phrase for our building. The building is ready for renovation.
I saw that.
That's our building.
Actually, I was thinking the building is ready to, for demolition.
I think as long as you use the word cozy in your description, anything will sell.
Cute and cozy.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, something like that.
Possibilities galore.
Well, yeah, that's true, too, yeah.
And it does have, actually, that factor too, where it's in a residential zone, that, you know, it doesn't have to be just business oriented.
Now, here's another silly question. I know when you sell a house, especially if you have a house that's pretty empty, you stage it. I mean, is there anything we could do for staging over there?
Well, you know, I was kind of thinking it would be kind of fun to have an open house, have some fire trucks, you know?
Yeah.
The clouds come and you do there, you know, gymnastic-type things.
I mean, I think we'd be open to an open house, you know, whatever makes sense, so. Baked chocolate chip cookies or whatever the...
Have a fire sale.
Apple thing.
Yeah, you want apple candles.
That's all included in the brokerage fee.
Yeah, right, right.
Did anyone else have any questions for Carla?
Not at this time.
No. I'm just gonna mention that is a pretty standard broker's fee, 6%.
However, it's always, things like that are always negotiable.
If we can sell it for that amount of money, it's worth paying the 6% because it's all free money to us. We own it. Well, I wouldn't say free. Well, you know what I mean.
Yeah. I mean, it would be absolutely wonderful. I question the reality.
All right, and again, let's be careful of what we say. We are on public. Any comments that we make about the asking price will set the tone for anyone who comes back and looks at this video and say, "Oh, it's free money. I'm gonna offer $50,000 for it because, hey, it's free money." Or, "Hey, I'm shocked that they think they can get $500,000 for this," you know? Then they know to lowball the offer below that $500 asking price because we're not expecting to get that much. Just saying. Let's be careful of how we phrase what our thoughts are while we're in public, so that we do not hurt the potential sale of the property.
And I think, I think I know the answer to this question, but just in case our millions of viewers don't, the broker's fee is paid upon sale, right?
At closing, yes.
So, not that I think this is gonna happen, but we could list with you for two years, it could not sell, and then we could decide to move on to somebody else. It's basically, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
And commission is only due at closing.
Right, right. Thank you.
And actually, the brokerage fee on the listing sheet would be listed at a percentage of the final sale price.
And that's what makes you a motivated Realtor, because you don't get paid unless you sell.
That's right.
And the more you sell it for...
The more you get.
The more you make. So those are your...
And like I said, in the end of the analysis, too, is the seller's sheet, so it gives you an idea to what price, what the town could be looking at as possible proceeds from that, based on that price.
Yep, and saw that as well. Now, am I right in assuming, let's say that we set a price for the asking price. After a certain period of time, there are no bites, then you would come back. Would you go check the market, see if things have changed, come back and say, because you'll provide feedback to us as far as whether or not anyone's even asked to look at it, or any type of feedback to say, "You know what, we may need to price this down," or, you know?
Right, and throughout the whole process, I'm continually watching the market as well, the properties that are in the analysis that are under agreement or available. Once those close, we'll see what they actually sold for and see if that affects where we should be, the ones that are under, that are active, if those go under agreement, okay, so we know at that price, they did get an offer. We don't know what price they received an offer, but we know it was priced enough that it brought a buyer to look at it to make the price. So throughout the process, and anything new that comes on the market, that's now considered competition, we look at that and kind of, you know, currently always monitoring to make sure we're priced where we should be.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any more questions?
I'm good.
I'm assuming that you're proposing a 90-day listing, 120-day...
The listing agreement? Yeah, we do, we do a minimum of six months.
Six months minimum.
Six months, minimum.
Okay.
And while we have a copy of the market analysis, is there some sort of agreement or something that we would sign or enter into?
Yep.
And did we get a copy of that from you?
I have a copy with me, and I can, or I can email them to...
Yeah, we would use a...
If you have a copy, do you want them, well...
It's a blank. I mean, I could fill out the basics and email it, or I could give you the blank one so you can review it and see what the vertige is in them.
Yeah, and kind of before we enter into any kind of agreement, we like to see what that agreement is.
Yes, oh, definitely, definitely.
So, just to confirm, is the board interested in seeing the contract from this Realtor in order to determine whether or not to enter into an agreement?
I am, yeah.
Definitely.
All right, so you haven't scared us away yet. If you could fill out the agreement and then send it to our secretary, so that the board can review it, and then we can make the decision to sign it, which would be at our next meeting.
Okay.
All right?
If you have any questions in the meantime, just let me know.
All right.
Thank you. Appreciate you waiting around for us. Thank you.
Can I just make a comment? Are the people watching? I mean, we're seeing comparables, you're not seeing what we're seeing, but we're seeing comparables, that is definitely a property that has value. So we recognize that. We're always very cautious on everyone's behalf, but we're not giving it away for free, nor is it a property that should be free. If you get the idea.
Sorry, that was a bad word. I didn't mean it that way.
Expression being like, "Yeah, you can get what you pay for."
Right. You meant unexpected. Okay, thank you, Carla.
Thank you. Have a good night.
And again, in the interest of the people that we have here, I am going to move down to item C, transfer station, quotes for used tractors. And we have our transfer station manager, Pete Gagnon, here to speak to this. I noticed we do have some new tractors, quotes, or I should say, new quotes for tractors, not new tractor quotes.
Pete Gagnon, transfer station. You guys have a sheet of what the three quotes I have right now. And I believe you do have...
Yeah, now, I looked at the, I wanna see, it's the MB one?
Yep.
Since everything is cryptic and abbreviated, I just had a question about one thing, the W A R colon zero one. Does that mean they're actually warranting that tractor for a year?
No, there is no warranties on used pieces of equipment.
All right, so I'm curious what that W A R is.
Where are you seeing that?
It's on the MB tractor quote, right after the serial number of the tractor?
Oh, okay. I looked at the spread, I'm looking at this spreadsheet and I'm going, that's...
Well, I looked at that, but I also looked at the individual quotes to see what they had to say on them. And this didn't say too, too much, other than what the spreadsheet said, except for that W A R colon zero one. And where I didn't see anything in print that said there was no warranty on it, I...
They're not very good at writing out any of, even when we've had repair orders. It's, I could find out what that means tomorrow, but everybody I've talked, and I've talked to quite a few dealerships and people, you don't get a used machine warranty.
I can confirm that for tractor experience through my call.
I'd still have to ask the question. Yeah, you know? Be nice to have a picture, too, Pete. Be nice to have a picture, too, so we know what we're looking at.
Yeah.
Well, you looked at each of these tractors, correct?
Except for the MB one, that one is in tilt. I just couldn't get up there.
Oh, okay.
They could have had it trucked down, but I'm not gonna pay them.
No, no, no. Did they have a picture of it?
There was a picture, yes. So I can get those together tomorrow for you.
I mean, you saw the picture.
Yeah, and the 2010 John Deere, I physically drove that machine.
All right, so the MB one, which, by the way, is the oldest of the tractors, and it's the middle-priced one. Then we have private sale and T-Quip.
Yeah, the way I have it, the MB one is my number three choice. The private sale one is my number one choice, mostly it's got the lowest price tag on it, which would leave me extra money for registration fees and other implements I can use for it.
And since this is the one that you physically looked at and drove, you see this as meeting and exceeding the needs of the transfer station, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
You have the enclosed cab that you...
Yep, yeah, all these have the enclosed cab and the exterior rollover protection system.
Or are there some attachments you wanted ideally?
Yeah, the pallet forks, possibly a snowplow, so I can take care of everything we need down there, save a little bit of money that way.
And you say with this cost, you'll be able to take the balance and use that for the attachments that may not necessarily come with this tractor.
Yeah, none of these have any extra attachments, except the front loader and the bucket on the back of.
So by going with the private sale, it would give him the funds to actually get some of those attachments he might need.
The other two are basically, for $600, they're basically the same price. I think one's $48.9, the other one's $49.5.
I guess my only concern with the private sale is usually at the dealerships with used equipment, they've serviced them and looked at ones, so the guy, is it an individual who's selling it?
Yep.
And it does seem kind of like, "Here's my caper," it's like, "How does it work?"
I haven't, I only met him for about 15 minutes. He, the timing, he had to go to another meeting somewhere, so he actually left me with the key and the machine, and I drove it home.
Should have drove it home.
Nice.
He's actually a very trusting guy, a nice guy.
However, you also pay less at a private sale than a dealership because you're not paying their overhead.
And you're not paying for a salesman.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, the other, the other thing...
And the private seller says he purchased it in October of 2018, so he's only had it for a few months.
Well, the other thing, too, is with a private sale, we can propose any restrictions we want ourselves, is we could, we could put something in his, I mean, he can say no, but we can put some sort of an agreement forward and say, "If you're selling it to us, we expect it, you know, X, Y, Z," so.
Well, luckily, because this vehicle is not inspected or...
It's not required to be inspected.
Exactly.
Can you take it to someone and have it looked over before you purchase?
I was just gonna say, there is a John Deere dealer in East Kingston.
Oh, Kensington?
Yes.
Yeah, Rosenkrantz in Kensington, yeah.
Yep. I'm familiar with them.
If we went with that, I'd wanna take it there to have it checked over. I mean, it is substantial, I mean, we're talking $13,000 less than the next price, so...
Is there someone in town who, in the highway or who knows about this, who could take a peek to this?
Does Lisa know anybody?
Well, let me put it to you this way.
Oh, thank you, really.
The only thing a mechanic is going to be able to do is make sure that there's no bottom-out frameworks or things like, they can't tell you that something that's working today is going to fall apart tomorrow.
I can do a physical inspection myself on the framework.
However, all of these vehicles are as-is.
Yes. And no warranty on any of them.
I'm not sure about, you know, I'm assuming T-Quip, because I know MB offers no warranty or guarantee on there.
Yeah, I talked to the general manager of T-Quip, and there's no warranty.
And that's another reason not to be spending another $10,000 or $13,000 for no warranty. That $13,000 may actually need to be used for any maintenance set, you know, to, but I do trust that our transfer station manager isn't going to buy himself a piece of equipment that obviously isn't going to last because it serves him no purpose.
Exactly. One thing that I do like about the fact that it's a John Deere versus a Caterpillar, and it's just a brand, there is possibility of getting like a plow attachment that fits on this, that is used, is much more likely with a John Deere than with a Caterpillar, because Caterpillar is more, you know, the real big-boy toys. Somebody locally or within not-too-far radius probably has a John Deere tractor like this that they've been using for the past 25, 30 years, but they don't need the plow, or they don't need... So we may actually be able to find some of the pieces without necessarily going to a John Deere dealer and going, "Yeah, we wanna order this."
Now, the one thing I did notice is the private sale has the least amount of horsepower out of the three options.
Yeah, and that's still plenty for what we need down there.
Okay, that was my question. Anybody have any further questions regarding the tractors?
I do not.
Anyone care to make a motion?
I will move that we authorize the transfer station man... I will move that we authorize the transfer station manager to purchase the John Deere, the 2010 John Deere 310J.
For the amount?
As presented. I'm not going to list that because I'm also going to, if this passes, I'm going to suggest that, see whether or not we can get a little bit sweeter deal on the price.
How about not to exceed?
No, because that also gives an amount to the private seller that.
Oh, that's this private seller.
Maybe you should do that motion first, and then if the person says no, then voting on this one with that a dollar amount's not going to help us.
So.
And again, when it comes to negotiating contracts, that's non-public information so that we do not affect the outcome of that contract, and that would be a sale as well.
I just want Jim to be able to finish his motion before I speak. I'll second for discussion if.
Okay, I'm.
You're done, right? So I'll second for discussion. Basically, I tend to agree with everything Jim has said and everybody else has said, but what I would recommend you do is you, you basically go back to the seller and try to get a good deal, and negotiation is part of it, I'm sure you're well aware, we've all bought cars before and stuff, but there's, the seller should be aware that we're not just going to kind of take the keys and hand them a cashier's check, that because we're a municipality, you kind of have to go back and forth with us a little bit because we're working for us and we're probably going to have to have some sort of paper trail.
Yes.
And then if he's, if he's cool with that and you've got a, you've got a good price, I think we should attempt to get back to him as soon as possible using, you know, non-public as we're allowed to do, right, for things like this, so.
I mean, certain things that we need is, there should be a title to this vehicle. Tractors in New Hampshire are titled.
And any maintenance history documentation, you know, receipts, et cetera, to show what has or hasn't been done on that piece of equipment?
Where do you have to go, what town for this one? Oh, plastic, so it is local.
Yeah, I mean, I could probably even save on trucking costs, get it registered to the town and drive it there.
Yeah, we'll get you a couple of cruisers to escort you.
Love to escort.
Where was that when we needed?
Yeah, we could have put you in the parade.
Yeah.
Next year. Transfer station float, getting pulled by the tractor, I like it. So I was the second.
Right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. You know, we don't, if you just keep communicating with Nancy, we might be able to meet earlier for a brief, three of us just to, if you need a quick, you know, response and stuff, so you don't have to wait two weeks.
Yeah, well, tomorrow afternoon, I'll try and contact him and see if I can start negotiations.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay. Now, let's go back to the beginning. Who has a sprinkler system update for us?
So, I'm going to give you this kind of short and sweet, and then unfortunately, I have to leave. I have a sick child at home, I got to get to the pharmacy while I can, but, so there was a meeting on Friday, 9:00 AM, at the construction manager's office, all the, the key parties were there. The mechanical contractor, HVAC company, Breen and Sullivan, was on the phone. I will basically give you the highlights. The first question I had for everybody, and I wanted some clarity around this, and I think the board will remember this because I verified it. The fire marshal up in Concord never gave us a date to be in compliance by. What happened is Jeff Murphy, who's the engineer and the project manager for this phase, came up with a summary of what we're going to do to remediate the deficiencies in terms of the fire sprinkler system. He said, we're going to do this, 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 and this, and we anticipate having it done by October 31st, 2019. He then sent that to the fire marshal, and the fire marshal responded with essentially, I understand, I concur. So the, so if there is a perception that the fire marshal is waiting for August 31st to come and lock this place up, if it's not done, we have been given no indication that that's his plan. He's been conversing with us and knows we're working on this. So the plan, the plan at this moment is, they're, they're having a meeting tomorrow, so it'll be everybody except for me, same people there. Breen and Sullivan is supposed to deliver kind of their, their last draft of the plans. There'll also be the architect, the sprinkler engineer, Jeff Murphy, Mike and all his, so they want to wrap up, what their intention is, is to wrap up, as they put it, a bulletproof plan, so the plan soup to nuts as to how to meet this requirement. They're then going to put a cover page on it and send it up to Concord, followed by a phone call to the fire marshal and say, in your inbox is the plan, can you please have somebody there review the plan? If there's something there you don't like, tell us now. If it's okay, please respond in writing that it's good to go, and then they're going to move out on this. Some people have addressed concerns that nothing's been ordered yet or anything like that. I, I think the board would be in agreement with the project manager that it makes no sense to order anything until you've got everything approved by the fire marshal. The intention is still to meet that August 31st date. Obviously, there are some, you know, lead times and stuff that might put it in danger, but they've, they've told me that their intention is to keep the channel of communications open with the fire marshal so that if there is a slippage there, he's going to be the first to know about it. And then the plan is to, you know, just get it done and not have to turn around and redo something that we thought was okay, but we waited until the fire marshal came in person to tell us it wasn't okay. So the idea is, would, would there be a couple of corrections here and there? Maybe, but it's not going to be wholesale things. So, in a nutshell, that's where they were last Friday. Plan is on Wednesday, they're getting back together, and this should be, we should be receiving correspondence soon that this is in the mail and headed up there.
Okay, have you seen, or will we see an itemized list of, breakdown of list of costs between not just labor, but all of the parts that make this a whole?
Yeah, what, what Mike had told me at that meeting was, he gave us a rough estimate so we knew what we were in for. We have that. He's looking to get a more specific cost estimate based on this plan, once the plan's done. Obviously, the fire marshal doesn't need to have that information, but he would be able to put numbers against it.
Okay, that's just something I would, because I'm thinking, when we first proposed the fire department, we had a breakdown of, you know.
Right, right.
This was the individual cost for the different people involved, these were the costs for construction materials, et cetera, et cetera.
Right. And the, you know, sort of jumping off of that is, as, I don't know if it was the last meeting, but recent meeting, Kim provided us with, this is what's left in that account, this is the interest on that account, this is general government and buildings, blah, blah, blah. So I think we should continue as these costs come in, nothing's really hitting it, you know, a great deal of stuff isn't hitting it just yet, but as it hits it, we can continue to track it in this meeting. And the only other thing I would say is, we just talked to a real estate broker about selling the old fire station, which, you know, assuming that all works out well, there's several hundred thousand dollars coming back to the town, that with a warrant article in March, we can, you know, replenish some accounts if we need to, so. So that's all I know.
All right, anybody have any other comments regarding the sprinkler system?
I'm sure the next time we get together, Mike will be here as long as we don't start as late as.
Take two and a half hours on non-public.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Just so the board knows, I know Kim has been keeping that spreadsheet up to date, and I believe it's in the fire station construction folder.
Folder, yeah.
Because our, our main thing is, there is at least one item that has to hit the bond. Other things we can use against other accounts, but the project manager's payment's going to have to hit the bond, right? So we have to make sure we leave enough there for at the end.
Yep. All right, so that's enough of that. On to the next one, review building inspector's report.
He did. But honestly, it doesn't say anything that he didn't say at the last meeting.
Yeah, exactly, and he was at this meeting, and basically what he says is he's in agreement with what his predecessor had shown, and he, he doesn't see any issues other than the sprinklers right now that need to be addressed, and he's going to be kind of joined at the hip with that crew, so.
Okay.
And I apologize, but I have to go to CVS.
Not a problem.
All right.
I don't think there's any major controversies left.
So, select member who left the meeting at 9:24 PM. Good luck with the babies. All right, so our next item is cleanup of the central fire station.
So, there's a lot of stuff left there that needs to be moved out so that we can sell the place. The chief, I spoke with the chief, and he's looking to probably move some of this stuff up into the mezzanine and some storage stuff. There's trophies from the fire association. I spoke, I emailed Jim Ryan, I haven't heard back from him, but through the chief, he said that they were going to take those trophies and put them someplace. The, there's a bunch of chairs up there that are really good, so we're looking to bring those to the town hall. There's a refrigerator that we want to get moved, and we want to move that to the transfer station for them to use.
Okay.
So what we were wondering is, to get the refrigerator moved, we need a vehicle. So can we use the fire department's snowplow truck to move it?
Makes sense.
Since it's a refrigerator in the old fire station that belonged, you know, to the, was used by the fire department, it would make sense, fire department vehicle would move it out of that station. Whether they move it to the dump or to the transfer, well, actually, yeah, to the transfer station. Perfect place for it.
Yeah, they're going to use it there.
Whether they were moving it there to, just to get rid of it, or moving it there so the transfer station can use it, it's still fire department, you know, taking care of property that was a.
If for some reason the fire department cannot allow you to use their truck, let me know. I have a, I drive a pickup truck, I will take it there.
Okay, there should be no reason because the board has said that it's okay to use their truck.
There may be a reason because they're leaving on Friday to go to Maryland.
Well, that's, I'm thinking, you know.
And they're driving that truck.
Yeah, but I'm not expecting to do it this week.
Okay.
Until they come back.
Yeah, so when they come back, absolutely.
Fire department might even have some people physically capable of carrying that.
We bust, we bust.
Okay.
So, and I'm also thinking that when we're doing that, maybe they can pick up the chairs and bring a few over here and put them in the, get those out of there.
Yeah, we're thinking we can do away with these uncomfortable chairs.
Well, I, I am, I do believe that the fire department's personnel is responsible for clearing out what's in that old station, because it was all theirs.
Yeah.
When they were in it, they should have taken it all with them when they moved out.
And the fire association should be handling their trophies.
Yeah, and that's what, I'm under the impression that that's what's going to happen.
Okay, good.
So we want to start fairly soon so that we can get, there's a lot of stuff in there.
So, reach out to the chief, tell him, get some people out there.
Tell him to get, get the.
Tell him to. Clean it out, we don't care where he puts it, what he does with it. Get it out of there.
So if he's going to, he says that he'll need, he may need to rent a locker, a storage container or something, he said, to, to put some stuff in, but I think he's backed off of that.
Oh, well, that's good.
I was just going to say, we have the Butler Building.
So he's going to also need to have, to hire, to not hire people, but use a detail.
I don't think he needs a detail.
What's he need a detail for?
I don't know.
To, a work detail is what he called it.
Oh, I'm thinking a police detail.
No, no, work detail, so he'll bring some guys on site to go through and get it cleaned up. That's what I meant, so.
Yeah, okay.
I'm amazed he's not asking for a small dumpster.
Not yet.
But once again, if they put stuff in plastic bags and they need it transferred to the transfer station, I have a pickup truck.
Yeah, if we can.
I have a pickup truck too.
If we have room, like in the Gale Library dumpster, or the police dumpster, which they fill up quick down there, but we could put some stuff into that or into the Greeny Park, we don't have to pay the tonnage if it goes to the transfer station. So, you know, maybe they can kind of spread it out a little.
What kind of stuff goes on the dumpster?
Not exactly sure, there's a lot of junk.
There could be like old furniture and old electronics and things that just, you know, has no value, you know.
No one in the town who wanted to open house.
Well, old electronics and.
Yeah, no.
I'm sure there are a lot, there's a lot of old paper stuff that we recycle through the transfer station.
Yep, yep.
And we actually get, I believe we still get paid for the electronics as well.
We pay to have the recycling taken away now.
Including paper.
Yeah, all that stuff I get.
I can't remember.
I think they have to pay for that nowadays.
Oh, okay, because I thought in Pete's recent.
Yeah, we'll check with Pete on that.
Yeah, what we need clarified in the manager's report is whether or not the dollar amount that has come in actually include, get a breakdown of that dollar amount, as far as what came in from bulk item fees, what was, you know, if there was any, because supposedly we got, let's say, $10,000. Was that $10,000 all in bulk item fees or?
It could have been the light goods too. I think they pick up monthly or quarterly, I'm not sure.
Exactly, so that, that's, we'll have them start putting in that breakdown so we understand what income is coming in.
Yep, where it's coming from, yep.
And then we would decide whether or not these would go to the transfer station, these chairs, to the metal pile which.
Or you could open them up to the residents if they want them, let them take them.
Yeah.
Well, I, again, it all depends on how many chairs are even over there.
Oh, no, okay.
I don't think there's that many chairs.
All we want to do, there's only 25 chairs, I just want to take those, put them there, leave them there, and use these better chairs that are a little more comfortable for people, that's all. Nothing more than that.
Yeah, not getting rid of any of what we have. Okay, so we're good with fire station cleanup, Diane?
Yep.
All right. Next item, employee evaluations, fire department extension to November 1st. And this is just the due date for the employment of employee evaluations, correct?
Correct, and they would be back in time for us to be able to do their budgeting.
Yeah. I would move that we extend the fire department.
Deadline?
Deadline to November 1st.
For the evaluations?
For, yeah, for the employee evaluations.
Okay, well, it's got to be part of the motion, she can't, you know.
It's the article, so.
Yeah, but nobody's going to see this when they read the minutes.
All right.
I will second that motion.
All right, any discussion?
No.
No. Last week, did anybody, or last meeting, did anyone discuss the purposes of this extension?
Yes.
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 Okay, so if anyone is curious why we're doing an extension, then they can go look at last meeting. I wasn't here. Next, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Now, we want to review the RFP for IT support. And did you?
I reached out via email and voicemail and did not get a response. I also had Chief Jewett was here, he reached out to the, his person that was doing his, to see if he even got my email, and he did, and he said it was just too. to see if he even got my email, and he did, and he said it was just too much for them to do.
Okay.
So, the only other one was the one we have from Armon, our current IT support people.
So, our current IT support people want to keep our business. The other company that we had met with several months ago, who had expressed interest in being a service provider, didn't do very well at following through on our request for an RFP or on follow-up contact. So, to me, that does not speak well of any potential, you know, we reach out to them with a concern or an issue, how quickly are we actually going to get a response?
I also reached out to the school and they wouldn't do it either.
Now, is in our RFP that we sent out, have we folded the police department into...
Yep. Yep, it's all in the RFP.
And tell them about the certification.
Oh, yeah, that's the other thing, too, the chief was concerned, Chief Jewett was concerned that, you know, they wanted to make sure that they had a certain certification for criminal...
Security processes.
And they, they do, Armon does have that certification. And past our police department does use them.
Okay, so, Armon is fully qualified to manage a network for a police department, which means they're also qualified to manage a network for a fire department.
Which they do already, yeah.
And for a library.
No, the library doesn't...
They're autonomous from us, so I don't think we have any say over what they do.
Okay. Who else do we have? So, they would be transfer station...
Town hall.
Town hall, fire department, police department, and those would be the, all of the locations.
Correct.
And just to let you know, a lot of the employees have said that they are pleased with Armon and they want to stay with Armon. The services seem to be really getting better.
And I will say that when it comes to dealing with Armon, they're very approachable. They do want to have satisfied, satisfied customers. So, they're responsive and, you know, any questions, they're more than willing to answer. And they resolve quickly the issues that I've seen occur. So, I would entertain a motion.
So, on the contract, Nancy is the one that would sign for that, just so you know?
Yep.
Because she's the, well, she's not the primary contact, she's the...
Administrator.
The administrator, I guess.
The town administrator.
Well, I'm the administrator to that as well, not just town administrator.
The network administrator.
I'm the contact person, I guess.
Right.
And then I give it to Diane.
But would the, that doesn't necessarily mean that you would be the one to sign, that just means you would be the contact person.
No, you guys would sign, right.
No, she's, you signed the contract.
Why would I sign it?
Because the board, it kept changing the, all the time, and it has you down there as your con, as the person to sign.
So, Nancy would be listed as the primary contact, but the signing of the agreement or the contract should be the board or the chair?
Then we'll, okay, we'll need to have it changed, then.
We can just have that changed.
One thing I'm going through, and I'm going through, double checking, I didn't see a, a lifespan for the contract.
It's on page, um, let me see, page... On page, there it is.
Thirty, okay.
No, but it's on page, there are no thirty pages.
Eighteen.
Oh, okay, there it is, for the duration of eighteen months.
Correct, and then it'll renew after that, 12 months after that, should we choose. And that's also the acceptance page, where you can see where they have Nancy as down there.
Yeah, and...
Well, technically, since we can't samburnize it, that should be for a duration of 12 months with the possibility of extension for an additional 12.
What are we talking about?
The duration?
No, we, if, on the RFP, I asked for 18 months because we wanted to go from, Kim would like to go calendar year and not July to July, or to June.
Okay, because normally, any contract that's more than 12 months has to either be in a warrant article, or it sits at risk of, if there's a default, it kills the contract. Or could kill the contract.
Okay, so, do you want to change this?
Right, so, any contract over 12 months needs to have an escape clause.
And it does. There you go.
Okay.
This is our third time signing with them?
Yep. Yeah, so, we have agreement shall renew automatically at the end of the prior agreement term for a period of 12 months unless Armon or client affirmatively terminates it. That just speaks to renewal.
Right, the, the terms is the next sentence down, I believe.
And then the term is for 18 months, beginning July 1, 2019.
Are you looking for the opt-out termination policy?
Well, I spotted that, and...
On page 14.
Now, our contract, we budgeted for this year, so we've only gone halfway through the year, we still have a half a year of funding, and then we'd be doing next year's contract.
Right.
So, that's a one year, right?
I suppose we're fairly well covered by either party may terminate this agreement upon 60 days written notice.
Yeah, that pretty much covers all of it.
Except for the fact that in March, if we have a default budget, and there's an increase in here, 60, I mean, literally, usually the opt-out is, in the event that we have a default budget, the town will not be liable.
Yes, but the fact that we can terminate the agreement within 60 days does not make it something that we are locked into for more than one pay period, or one budget year.
Okay. Yeah, I think it'll be a little bit more strongly worded, but...
So, for example, this is starting July 1st, right? Which means one-year period, June 30th. We go to vote in March, April, May, June, that gives us 90 days, and we can terminate with a 60-day notice, which means we could terminate within the 12 months. We're covered.
So, would you like a motion to accept it on that?
I have no idea anymore.
We need a motion to authorize to sign, and preferably a motion for the...
Move to have the...
Chair sign...
Chair sign the, the contract with Armon for IT services once the contract has been retyped.
You're right.
I would second that motion, with no discussion for me.
As opposed to saying retyped, or I, I think maybe amended as discussed?
Corrected, amended, you can choose whatever word you wish. After almost four hours of staring at the computer screen, my eyes are starting to go fuzzy.
I hear you, I, I just want to say, just to clarify that the only change we're looking to have to that contract is what we discussed.
The chair will be the signatory.
Yeah. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, my next item. Warrant for unlicensed dogs.
I'm sure I would move that we sign the warrant for unlicensed dogs for the...
Do I have a second?
Oh, definitely, I'll give you a second.
All right, and for those who, everyone should know who's on this list because you haven't registered your dogs yet, but this warrant is to authorize our friendly police department to come knocking on your door. So, please register your dogs.
There are a lot of unlicensed dogs.
Yes, there are.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 The number of unlicensed dogs, yes. Whose dogs are unlicensed, no.
No, it wouldn't say whoever. Imagine 145 unlicensed dogs.
Yeah.
License those dogs, it's good for the doggies, too.
It has nothing to do with good for the doggies, it's good for the town.
Well, that too, but I mean, I'm giving them a...
No, we can't help, it doesn't help us find them. Yeah, but microchips...
To ensure that they have rabies shots.
And that, too.
It's just our, it's the town's way of ensuring...
It's not the town, first off, it's the state. It's a state law that licenses.
And by licensing a dog, you're ensuring that the dog has been vaccinated against rabies. And that's the whole purpose of it, really, is to make sure, you know, the dogs in town are vaccinated.
Which is good for your children.
That's what I said.
All right, so, that, that we're signing, any other biz, let's see, under, other business, ta-ta-ta.
I'll do the other.
The what? All right, there's a, yes. You can just pull that out for me, please.
Are you on to the manifest?
We, yeah, we're on to the other items.
Okay.
Other business, item four. We don't have any other business, correct?
Correct.
All right, so, we're on to the signed manifest, appointments and correspondence.
Okay, I'll move the, recommend to the state fire ranger the appointment of William Ingalls to the position of fire warden for a three-year term to expire May 2022.
I don't think you need to, I guess you do need to make a motion for that.
What's matter?
I guess you do need to make a motion for that.
Yeah, because we have to actually sign the recommendation.
Okay, right, okay.
And since it's all one sheet, let me do all three of them.
So, did you second that?
Excuse me?
Do we have a, do we have a second?
He's doing all three at one time, so let him do his motion again.
You're redoing your motion?
To include all three.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to make three, yeah, three motions in one.
Or three separate motions.
Because it's only one sheet that we're signing, it needs to all be one motion.
Okay, thank you.
So, addendum to that motion is to recommend to the state fire ranger the appointments of the following, Chief John Alcaldino, Richard Dupree, Jeffrey Gerbach, Skip Marion, as deputy fire wardens for a three-year term to expire in May 2022, and to recommend to the state fire ranger the appointments of the following, Ralph Hesterbrook and Robert Zalinski, as issuing agents for a three-year term to expire in May 2022.
I second the motion.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
I would further move that we sign the letter to the state liquor licensing board our non-objection to Duke's General Store having a beer and wine license.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, all in fa, any questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to sign the vendor manifest dated June 4, 2019, in the amount of $86,97.66.
I'll move it for discussion purposes.
All right. So, you're seconding for discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, and what is that discussion?
Oh, it's just I noticed that there was a check in there...
Does she feel it?
Right, that I believe is inappropriate, and therefore I will not be voting to sign the manifest.
Well, you can sign it, Jim, but just put your initials that you're not in favor of that one check.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and what is the reason that you're not in favor?
Because we have a number of organizations that the town contributes funds to through a process on the warrant, and I believe this is, this circumvents the, the spirit of what the town has, I mean, it may be a very worthy cause, but all these other groups have, you know, come in through a cer, specific process.
Even though I'm not involved in this particular check, I, I will say that I can correlate it to, it is a check that, or an expense, that the recreation department took a vote on and voted to pay for, so, which is this, very similar to them also spending money for, say, the Boy Scout hosted Halloween party, which is another worthy organization. I will also say that the conservation commission has, last year, did the same thing. They actually paid for the tests directly, not to this particular organization, but to the ones who were doing the tests.
However, this is public funds, and I believe that there is a process of, for contributions to non-public organizations, and it needs to be... At the la, last meeting, there was a, a major discussion, we discussed whether or not we could or couldn't, we haven't received an answer, check just appeared.
Could or couldn't do what? I wasn't at the last meeting.
Oh, there, there was a major discussion on whether or not that was the appropriate way of expending public funds, and whether or not we could actually make contributions to private organizations where we have no control over what the money is done, and it's not part of, there's a warrant article that appears every year for drugs are dangerous, for family mediation, for all sorts of things, and that was, that's the appropriate way for that kind of a contribution to be made.
My only question when I saw that check was whether or not there was any overlap in, did conservation cover some of this, and now, did they go to two different organizations?
And we had somebody from conservation at that meeting who suggested, from the way they were suggesting it, that there was. We have not heard anything further on the matter, and I brought it up with our liaison, and the response was, well, the check's here, it must be, it must be okay. I cringe when I hear things like that.
Okay, so, I would also like to hold that one check.
Okay.
So, I don't recall what the amount...
So, actually, we can take, if you take $180 off that amount...
I move to, do I have to actually do the math, I'll say less than 180?
So, yeah, first, rescind your mo, amend your motion, amend.
Okay, I amend my former motion. Okay, I amend my former motion and make a new motion.
Not a new one, you're, because you're amending.
Motion that we sign the vendor manifest dated June 4, 2019, in the amount of $86,097.66 less.
$180.
$180.
And you can just initial that, and that way, Kim, we'll have that on record.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, um.
There's one more, I think.
Got two more?
Yes. No, I just wanted to finalize this is, I would like, perhaps, our bookkeeper can let us know whether or not there have been any other fees paid for this purpose from any of the, you know, authorized by any other departments. I do have a conservation meeting Thursday where I can bring it up as well.
Yeah, I remember, I'm glad you caught that, because it wasn't even that we were gonna say no, but we need to discuss it first, and be sure what was proper.
All right.
Okay. I move to sign the fire rescue vendor manifest dated June 4, 2019, in the amount of $1,020.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion and announce that the board sign the payroll manifesto.
Yeah, you're just announcing.
The payroll manifest on May 28, 2019, for pay period May 12 to 25, 2019, with the pay date of May 30, 2019.
I think it says May 28, doesn't it?
No, it's got crossed out.
Oh, it's been updated, sorry.
It's updated.
I don't have the updated one, sorry.
Yeah, it's updated.
However, I thought we signed, there's a payroll manifest downstairs.
What was that?
Isn't there a payroll manifest?
Yeah, from last Monday, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So, this one was signed tonight, then?
No, I, it was downstairs, Jim said. We got it.
No, no, tonight, downstairs on the table, there was a payroll manifest.
That's what I just said. There is, we got paid last Monday, and this is the one you're signing.
Okay, so I thought you had signed it last week when you came in to do other things.
Okay, so, in, in that case, Kate, we do need a motion to sign that payroll manifest.
I think she just did it.
Okay.
No, well. I said, I motion, no, I announced, but I, Kate, I have a motion again that the board needs to sign.
Yeah.
The payroll manifest of May 28, 2019, for pay period May 12 to 25, 2019, with the pay date of May 30, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, let's see.
Chair.
Any announcements?
No.
All right.
Move to adjourn?
No.
Wait, you gotta do minutes.
Approval of minutes.
Yes.
Oh, Madam Chair, I would move to approve the public and non-public minutes dated May 21, 2019.
I second the motion.
Uh, any discussion, comments?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, please.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Aye, aye, aye.
And this is at 9:56 PM.
This is crazy.
Thank you very much.